Creekmore, yes. Cummins?
Here.
Fields?
Here.
Heatherly?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Leslie?
Here.
Lester?
Here.
Rudner?
Here.
Wheeler?
Here.
Miller?
Here.
Item two, recognition of guest. We don't have any. Item number three, public comment. Is anyone in the audience wishing to speak on an agenda? Let the record reflect no one who wished to do that. Item number four is the consent agenda. I'll make a motion to approve it with the following change. The date for Jellico High School to come to the university to November 18th. Second by Mr. Johnson. Any more discussion?
Creekmore? Yes. Cummins?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudner?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Item five, approval of the record agenda.
Chairman, I have a question on that for Mr. Cantrell, probably. My understanding under Robert's Rules of Order, if this body votes on an action, the only way we can reconsider that action is if somebody that was on the winning side brings it up for reconsideration. I point to 10G in particular, which is consider rescinding board action on September 9th.
The, I think the Robert's Rule of Order that you're referring to is in the same meeting, so that if during a meeting, let's say you make a vote and later on in the meeting, something comes up and you decide you want to rescind that, that then has to be done the way that you're referring. Month to month, as long as you give notice and it gets on the agenda, it can be voted on, like you could vote to rescind a motion and put it back on the next month, rescind it, put it back on. So, as long as they put it on the agenda and gave notice, it's just like a normal action.
I yield and I'll second your motion, Mr. Chairman. Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Call him.
Creekmore?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudner?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item six, comments from the chair. I'll refrain from commenting until the end of the meeting. Item number seven, records monthly reporting.
Okay. An update on the security cameras. The security camera installations are scheduled with Ella set for December 1st for installation and Valley View is scheduled for December 8th. We're working closely with UDT to transition the district to a new internet provider and this change is expected to generate a cost savings while continuing to support reliable connectivity across schools. The new leech bed installed for the, has been installed for the septic system at Ella Valley. We installed two new canopies at CCHS Way Room above the new garage doors. Repaired approximately 700 feet of fence and two gates at Jagsboro Elementary. Repaired the septic system at the grease trap at Jagsboro Elementary by the cafeteria. The remainder of the HVAC units have been installed at Valley View Elementary. A new ticket booth was completed at the lower entrance of Jellico High School football field and new cabinets and countertops were installed at Jellico High School in the office.
I'd like to add one thing on the leech beds at Ella Valley. In conversation with our maintenance department, if we had been, put that out to contract, it would be about $25,000. Our own maintenance department done the leech bed and we saved about 20 grand. So, kudos to the guys for doing that, saving that much money. So, that's all I have. Let's say report, Ms. Fields? Recognize Mr. Pearson, Director of Finance.
Yeah. Thank you.
Enter, I get tonight on the August 2025 financials. 141 fund cash from the trust today is 16 million, 161,000 dollars. Revenues are 11.7 percent. Spentures are 16.8 percent. The 142 fund cash from the trust today is 2 million, 200,000 dollars. Revenues and expenditures above that 7.5 percent. And the 143 fund cash from the trust today is 2 million, 500,000 dollars. Revenues are 11.1 percent and expenditures are 10.6 percent.
Motion to approve the monthly financial. Motion by Mr. Lester to have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Cummins. Any discussion? Call him.
Creekmore?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudner?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Out of these, I pray the budget amendments resolution and tonight there are seven budget amendments to be taken.
I'll make a motion to approve 10-1, 10-2, 10-3, 10-5, 10-6, 10-7. Have a second. Second by Ms. Creekmore. Any discussion? Call him.
Creekmore?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudner?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed, Chair.
Item 10, Budget Amendment 10-4. I make a motion to approve that. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Creekmore. Any discussion? Call him.
Creekmore?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Johnson? Leslie?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudner?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you.
Out of C, review of the bids. There was one bid. It was for one additional role assembly church at Jackson Road School. The bids were requested on September 11th, opened on September 25th. They were requisitioned by Stan Marlowe in the maintenance department. There was one bid from Toke Fund for 29,875 dollars and a recommendation for a reward is to find out.
I have a motion to approve C1. Move to approve? Second. Motion by Mr. Johnson, second by Ms. Rudner. Any discussion? Call him.
Creekmore?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudner?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
And out of D, request permission to advertise bids and there's none at this time. And out of E, request permission to keep the joint contract. That's all I have.
Items for action section. I'll make a motion to approve item 10B, C, D, E, F, H, I, J. Second. Second by Mr. Johnson. Any discussion? Call him.
Tell us again which one it is, sir.
It would be item 10B, C, D, E, F, H, I, J. Yes.
Creekmore?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudner?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Item 10A, consider for approval the revised employment contract for the director of schools. I make a motion to approve. Do I have a second? Second by Ms. Wheeler. Discussion? Call him.
Creekmore?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Johnson? Leslie?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudner?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Item 10G, consider rescinding the board action on September 9th, 2025 regarding the differentiated pay plan. Must pleasure the board.
Mr. Chairman, I am incredibly, incredibly against this.
Well, we'll get that to another discussion. Do I have a motion to approve? Motion. Motion by Mr. Cummins. Have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Leslie. Now, discussion.
Mr. Chairman, I am incredibly against this. I think the time to discuss this and hash this out was last month. If you are on this board and you did not realize what you were voting on or you didn't bring up discussion on it, I think it's very, very, very bad precedent for us as a board to approve something one month, let a series of employees think that they're getting compensated for a job, execute portions of that job and then come back the next month and say, actually, no, we're just kidding, you're not getting that money. So, if we were against this or we're in favor of this, whatever, we should have discussed this last month and I'm really concerned about the precedent that this will have on this board and I am very strongly against this and I encourage the rest of this board to vote against this as well. Thank you. Any more discussion?
Yes. On this, on the differentiated pay, looking at it and looking at the amount of money, we have said, aside, it's just a little over $20,000 and 10,000 of it is going to one person. And I look at that and that job, as far as data analysis for both high schools, should probably fall upon the secondary supervisor, to work with those principals with that data. And we're looking at some, with the alternative school, wanting to send four teachers from the high school during the planning type two days a week to the alternative school to teach Algebra I, Algebra II, Algebra V, Biology. And that can be used for those positions, to pay those teachers extra pay. We've got a lot of teachers in the county that go above and beyond every single day and there are level four, level five teachers and a lot of times, those get more recognized. And I know when I was a principal, you relied on teachers and they don't get compensated for what they do and that's what I look at.
Thank you. Any more discussion, Mr. Chair? Yes.
I understand your position, Mr. Wheeler and Mr. Robinson. Yeah, I would be, I'm going to vote no on this position or on this decision. The, there's four other people faked it here and they are people that are going above and beyond as well and they're doing duties outside their normal scope. So, I feel like...
I'm not saying that we, you know, but I'm not talking about that. I'm just thinking it's a lot to put in one. When you take half of your differentiated pay and give it to one person, I'm not talking about...
We voted in favor and it's been a concession here and all the time in the community if we don't follow through on the actions. So, this has been called before we voted on it the first time. So, that's my position and, you know, the director decided what we do.
The reason this wasn't put in place is it aligned with our district's improvement plan, our district's strategic plan and we had done this in the past when we paid a person part-time at Campbell County High School a few years ago in differentiated pay. They received the $10,000 differentiated pay to work at just Campbell County High School. This is to do the data for the three schools, the Ella, Jellico High School and Campbell County High School. So, and I understand, I wish, if I had discussed this with you all before, this wouldn't have, you know, been an issue to be rescinded, but it was submitted at the deadline for differentiated pay, so I don't know that we can modify. Maybe we can, I don't know, but I don't know if we can put the teachers in who are doing an additional role, even though that's an allowable expenditure for differentiated pay. I don't know if I've missed the deadline now to amend that and add those to the differentiated pay.
Mr. Chairman, I actually have another question for Mr. Cantrell. If, if an employee, we voted on additional pay as a body and the employee is under the impression, again, we voted on it, it's solidified, we approved amendments, et cetera, and over the last month, they've been performing that job and then we come back and we take that away and we don't compensate them, would they not have grounds for a lawsuit?
That, that creates a good question and let me phrase it in the idea like this. I come from a coaching background and let's say that I had a real successful season this year and I'm getting inquiries from bigger systems and under the Differentiated Pay Act, my board votes to say, hey, we're going to give you an extra $10,000 because you went to another state playoff. And I turned down a job from, say, Dobbin's Bennett or Science Hill that would have paid me more with the understanding, I'm relying on your action. I think under a scenario like that, yes, the employee would have turned down an opportunity to, you know, make more money and now it's just out there because somebody's filled the Dobbin's Bennett job that would go through. So, I think it would be dependent upon the employee's situation and whether or not they incurred damage or it affected their decision, but yes, there are scenarios where an employee couldn't have an action based on that money. Is that fair?
Yeah. I was just making sure I'm accurate. Thank you.
When we moved this principal to alternative school, we changed that from 10-month to 11-month, which gave him a substantial raise and I've looked in the minutes and said that was to do, give him additional money to do data analysis.
Well, he actually doesn't have the data in at that time of the year.
So, he's getting a full month to do that?
Yeah, to do the, the updates on the students who are being enrolled to coordinate with the high schools if they're coming back, to get those plans together because when we moved it to a 10-month position, the principal did not have time to go in. It took away the instructional time and the online time that they were spending because they were having to do the record keeping and notifying schools, doing the end plates or sending them back to their school of record and that kind of.
So, if I'm not mistaken, if it goes through, this year we're making 99K a year from previous person, getting 83?
Probably so.
The principal would get 13K.
Any more discussion? Call him.
Creekmore?
Yes.
Is this rescinded?
Yes.
Yes. Cummins?
Yes.
Fields?
No.
Heatherly?
No.
Johnson?
No.
Leslie? Lester?
No.
Rudner?
No.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller? I'll take a, motion passed.
Okay, at this time, I'd like to make a motion to suspend the rules. I'd like to make a look at, have a second. Second. Second by Ms. Creekmore. And this is to discuss the interim parameters for the interim. Call him.
Mr. Chairman, just for a point of clarity, so we're only going to discuss, we're not going to take any action.
I want to lay out, Mr. Cantrell went over a few things today, the parameters and the timeline. Kind of that to get it cleaned up before we put it out in front of us.
But this is just discussion, we're not planning to take any action and suspend the rules.
This is suspend the rules right now, right?
Suspend the rules to talk about...
And then you technically have to have another vote to...
To take action.
Before you take any action.
Creekmore?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudner?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed, just suspend the rules.
Okay, thank you. The motion will be, and this is what we paraphrase now that I'm not... Since the amendment and the contract's been approved for Director Fields, you know, we're going to have to have someone take the helm January 1st. And, you know, in a small town, you know, rumors are going to start flying tomorrow who we're going to take what, how, when, where. And I would rather settle this sooner rather than later on picking an interim and not have this go to the holiday season. So, on consultation with Mr. Cantrell, my proposal is to advertise effective tomorrow for 10-day period. Resumes would be sent to Yale Parks by October 30th at 5:00 PM. We have caused special call meeting on Monday, November 36th to discuss and name an interim based off the resume. The interim must have the qualifications per board policy. The interim will receive the same compensation as the current director. The timeframe will be from January 1, 2026 until May 31st, 2026. If the interim is a current employee, they may go back to their position that they hold and the interim cannot apply for the permanent director position next month. Mr. Cantrell, anything to add?
The only thing I would maybe clarify is there, in theory, could be a situation where you could employ your next director of schools earlier and I would probably say that the interim's position would go simply until you get the next director in, so it's shorter, it would end, because there'd be no reason.
Whatever, whatever that would be.
You can't have, since it's a statutorily created position, the day that Jennifer leaves, there has to be someone on an interim basis and it's hard to do a search in the middle of the year if you go outside of the county because people are under contract, filled in, so. But I would just, I think you ought to not put a specific date, just say, that's right, that if you get somebody earlier than that day in with another person comes in.
Director's position is vacant.
Yeah.
Then if you, Mr. Cantrell, if you say that the interim cannot apply for the certain position, is that, is that a normal situation?
That's very normal, but it's kind of like a pastor is an interim of church because if somebody, if you all appoint an interim, it's almost like appointing an incumbent for an election, they get an automatic heads-up for the next position and people that are under that, I'm not saying that anybody would do this in your system, but in theory, if somebody was wanting to be the director, they could try to sabotage the person that's ahead of it. It makes it a very odd environment when you have, because I'm assuming people within your system will want to apply and they will think, well, this person's gotten an unfair head start by naming him, so usually you say, hey, if you're going to put your name in the hat to fill in the seat, you can't apply and then that way, everybody starts at an equal playing field. So, it's very common.
Sure. Thank you. Any more discussion?
I have a quick question related. I feel like it's probably this board's appetite to have TSBA conduct the next board search. Is that something we should also take for the next director search?
Well, in theory, the budget amendment proved earlier, had money set aside.
Right, but do we need to take further action?
Well, I plan, don't put that in the November agenda to consider hiring them. And I spoke to them and I know what their timeframe is that they're needing to conduct the search and they're ready to go whenever we give them room.
Awesome.
And there's no timer. The longer they have, the better.
Right.
And, you know, it needs to time up with naming someone before the end of the spring.
Awesome.
Thank you. So, that's my motion. Do I have a second? Second. Second by Ms. Wheeler. Call him.
Creekmore?
Yes.
Cummins?
Yes.
Fields?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Leslie?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Rudner?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
What time does that need to be on November 3rd? It's 6:00.
Items for discussion? Nothing. Mr. Cantrell?
I do have a legal item and I think that Mr. Pearson would appear to hope for just one, 10 seconds or 30 seconds. I forwarded this to the chair and I believe he forwarded it to everyone. I got a letter from representatives of the architectural firm as it relates to y'all's gym project and what was discussed at last month's meeting and they had attached an unsigned letter from Goddard, the steel contractor, that had been provided by your general contractor as one of the reasons why we were having time difficulties in the delays. They had essentially reached out to Goddard and Goddard said, we did not send this letter and the, essentially, I don't say allegation, but they're essentially now in dispute that contractor says, I got this email or letter from Goddard, I'm Goddard's stationery, unsigned, forwarded it to them as the reason, the contractor or the architect says, no, that was a false reason. You all are not an investigative body. You have no investigatory powers, you have no subpoena powers. My suggestion would be to do two things as it relates to that. I would let Mr. Pearson refer this to the state auditing authority so that they could do an audit. This is a governmental contract and you've now got, this is a serious thing. If there is, if there is in fact a fake document being created to substantiate why a project is not being completed, that's fraud and you cannot treat that as a governmental entity like you do, a general entity where there'd just be a lawsuit. So, Mr. Pearson would refer that, if I'm correct, to the state auditing authority. They have investigatory powers. I would simultaneously make a recommendation that your director make a forward to your county district attorney, Mr. Effler, and let him do a criminal investigation simultaneously to the state's audit. And I realize that, you know, that may be humorous, but you've got two entities that you have no ability to put under oath, you have no ability to question, you have no ability to say who's telling the truth. One of them is not telling the truth and I don't know any other way to help you resolve that issue than to make a recommendation that you let Mr. Pearson, who is a separate entity that you all, make a referral to the state and let your director make a referral to the Attorney General and they can take what, if any, action needs to be appropriate.
Since we're still under suspension, do we need to make a motion to take that recommendation?
Well, this falls under my, my legal matter that I would bring up, so I think you have to make a motion, you have to make a motion to suspend the rules, but you do have to make a motion to direct Mr. Pearson to report to the state comptroller and you have to make the motion to get the director to report to Mr. Effler, if that's y'all's choice. I mean, y'all may choose not to do it, but you're going to get into a he said, she said that you all can answer, and I have no ability to guide you, I don't know who's telling the truth, but somebody's not.
It is your recommendation to?
Yeah, and I think that would be, Mr. Pearson, is, what is your recommendation?
Well, to get a minimum, yeah, according to the state comptroller, those who, Mr. Cantrell's, that government contract, and the whole issue at your last meeting was, why was this material not available, and you had to speak between the general contractor and the sub, and then the allegation is that the general contractor forced a doctor to the sub to substantiate their allegations. We can't resolve that, and you can't resolve that.
I'll make the motion. Motion by Mr. Cummins?
Second.
By Mr. Johnson, any more discussion? Call room.
Creekmore, yes. Cummins?
Yes.
Field?
Yes.
Heatherly?
Yes.
Johnson?
Yes.
Lassley?
Yes.
Lester?
Yes.
Reiner?
Yes.
Wheeler?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you. Thank you. There's a student representative, Ms. Aldridge, from Jellico High School. Anything? Thank you. Is Makai Gibson here? I have a attendance update.
Now we're done.
If you'll get that to us. And recognize school board members. Mr. Cummins?
Very glad and honored to see the GM named Dr. Dino, he is pillar of our community, and dedicated his life to the education system, so really proud of that, and I just want to thank you all for what you do. Last thing.
Oh, really, Mr. Johnson, I worked for Dino for about 10 years, he's a very organized person, you never have to go behind him and dig around, what do you do, about 3:00 AM? It's done, you don't have to worry about it. Yeah, always, in 3:00 AM, I go in, his desk, top, just be just cleaning, I go back in, I figure, oh, stack, I put that in.
Thank you.
12:00.
Ms. Wheeler?
Excited about the football stadium, Johnny Coach Bruce, I don't think he's excited about it. Hi, just in front with Ryan and Johnny Bows, and my name is Dr. Dino and Coach Bruce.
Ms. Fields? Mr. Johnson?
I just want to say how sad I am to see Director Jellico, Director, thank you for